Hi, it's 6:30, so this meeting was called to order. This is a regular meeting of the Oakland Board of Education. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. On a roll call, please. Mrs. Valpil.
Here.
Mr. Stotz.
Here.
Mrs. Rotondo.
Here.
Mr. Tabey.
Here.
Mrs. Marman.
Here.
Mr. Schaefer.
Here.
Mrs. Bochka, we have Quorum.
Here.
All right, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, Section Two, there's no executive session at this time, so we're moving on to Section Three for the presentations. So I asked Dr. McDowell if he could share this looking ahead to next year presentation. It was previously emailed out, but just wanted to go through some of the things here. So I'm going to step aside and let Dr. McDowell take over.
So, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being in attendance. And so we have just a few slides. We wanted to make sure that we were giving our community a preview of what they should expect moving into September. And so our theme, thank goodness, is that we are shifting out of language, actions, and activities connected with pandemic recovery. We believe that that period of time is over and we're shifting to how do we support rigorous learning environments? And so that'll be the theme of our looking ahead. And so as always, we are driven by our mission, which is really focused on ensuring that our students are confident and they're encouraged and inspired. And so our district leadership actions are really focused on making sure that we're analyzing systems and removing barriers. We're moving away from compliance with an emphasis on instructional improvement. We're shifting away from mandated curricula to what is best practice dictate. And then ultimately, we commit to sustaining strong leadership as well as commit to sustaining and retaining our dedicated faculty and staff. It's our priority for this upcoming year is supporting rigorous learning environments, which includes high-quality engaging and differentiated instruction. And so the leadership team, as well as the support staff, will be working to make minor revisions to our differentiated instruction in our small group instruction and intervention program. Adjust and update our multi-tiered system of support, making sure that all of our students get what they need. Support our expansion of our professional learning communities. And so we'll be moving into Year Three with the learning schedule here in Oakland. And then subtle tweaks will be made by the leadership team based on the data. So for example, this year, the leadership reviewed the data and found that by adding a few additional minutes to our fifth grade students, we wanted to help propel them ahead so that they were ready, willing, and able to be successful upon middle school. So we'll continue with that tradition. Increase the effectiveness of professional development, addressing the curriculum shifts. And so at the elementary levels, there are curriculum updates in ELA and math. And so Collingswood and Oakland teachers will be working on a summer project, not only auditing our K-5 literacy curriculum, but they will also be mapping the updates and the standards in literacy. We're also looking to just reinforce our academics and then making sure that the connections between school culture and mental health are there, as well as building capacity for inclusive classrooms. And so as always, our facility, it's a precious one, and we want to make sure that it is well-maintained, large in part to the efforts of our phenomenal Buildings and Grounds Team. Maintaining and updating our facilities as needed will be an ongoing pursuit. In addition to making sure that we recapture all educational space in Oakland for Oakland students. And so there will need to be discussions about programmatic expansion. We know that specifically, there is a waitlist for preschool. And so there will need to be discussions about what does that look like to make sure that Oakland families have access to high-quality early childhood education, including looking at safety as always, and making sure that there are supports in place to maintain a safe and structured learning environment, in addition to continuing to refine our technology support for the school. And so we made some strategic moves and reorganized the technology team in order to be more timely in the response and to make sure that tickets were being answered faster, customer service was being provided, and that there were fewer delays in the delivery of services. In addition to always seeking to pursue improvements in the way in which we communicate and the channels in which we use, we will be seeking to increase our presence on social media to provide public information to our community in subsequent months. And so just to reiterate in terms of what's included in our current budget, annual contractual salary increases for all faculty and staff, which also includes health and benefits, employee assistance programs, extra-duty assignments, and then staff and retention recruitment bonuses. In addition to Round Two or Part Two of the compensation improvement package for our instructional assistance, last year was Part One, and we wanted to continue and deliver on the promise to increase compensation for our classroom aides, our instructional assistants, and we will continue to do that with annual increases, including paid time off. Curriculum support, I referenced it a bit earlier, the summer curriculum audit will be taking place with an emphasis on closing opportunity gaps, looking at how accessible our curriculum is, paired with the rollout toward the launch of a new curriculum platform to make it easier for both staff and families to access all of our curriculum materials and tools. And so staff will have access this summer, and then during back-to-school night, we will be launching Parent Access so that they have access to all of the curriculum.
Is this different than the one we previewed in early fall of last year?
It is. That company was purchased by a much larger company, so now they're a subsidiary, and the level of service to districts of our size was lagging, and so we needed to go with a different vendor. Curriculum, in terms of looking ahead, there's been lots of spirited debate across the country about the science of reading, about balanced literacy, about reading instruction. And so we will be making the necessary standard revisions over the summer. We will also continue to use the K-5 Universal Screener, which helps to identify lagging skills for students. And so Oakland will be in Year Two of utilizing a universal screener, and so they'll be refining based on what we learned this year. NEW will be a new tool for phonemic awareness and decoding. We'll continue with foundations for phonics, spelling, and vocabulary, and then we will also be seeking to better integrate the curriculum crosswalks, which includes Holocaust, Amistad, climate change, DEI, and informational literacy. And so we also think that it's important to share with our Oakland community what's also taking place at the secondary level. And so there will be curriculum updates at middle school language arts, specifically standards for grades six through eight. And then we are seeking to shift our instructional model to the Readers/Writers Workshop, which is a similar model to what we experience currently in Oakland School. There'll be new resources for our multilingual learners, specifically bridge-level programs, as well as looking at how do we better support students with interruptions in formal education. And then high school language arts, we'll also see standards revisions and curriculum mapping that will also take place this summer, in addition to the development of a transitional course for incoming or rising ninth graders who have historically been challenged in the area of reading and literacy. In terms of math, we will be providing the standards updates in math. We will continue with the utilization of our N2 Math Program, K-12. We're in Year Three in elementary, Year Two in middle school, and Year Two in high school, specifically for algebra, Algebra II and geometry. Supplemental math course will be used for Tier Two as well as Tier Three interventions, and so these are students that Tier One or whole-group instruction is not sufficient. In addition to a fact fluency tool, FRACs and Reflex Math. And then NEW for this year at the high school will be an Algebra/Geometry I course, which is an integrated math course, historically for students who have struggled in math. Traditional algebra, traditional geometry, and Algebra II will still be offered, as well as honors and advanced placement courses. But for students that need more time to wrestle with the standards and the expectations for algebra and geometry, the standards will be spread out over a two-year period. And so in lieu of students who are behind being assessed in ninth grade, they'll be assessed in Grade Ten. In STEM, we'll be maintaining much of our current level of support right now, and K-5 is Mystery Science. And so for this upcoming school year, we'll be reviewing programming. We believe that a science program is needed in order to continue growing with our students, but we wanted to give our school leaders time and our teachers time to review all of the options that are out there so that we can make an informed decision. And so the goal would be for a program launch for this time next year with a new science curriculum. Secondary science will continue to use EdPuzzle, which is an instructional video content management system, which also helps to provide on-demand, standards-based lessons. And then the high school will also be using a very similar tool. Well, language, elementary Spanish will continue to be offered in grades K through five. Our middle school program will still emphasize Spanish culture and communication. And then at the high school, we will still offer French, Spanish, and German, four years for all of our linguistic superstars on campus. We will be updating the curriculum in German III and German IV, and then there will be a new curriculum adoption, grades nine through 12, in Spanish. In social studies, we will continue to use BrainPop at the elementary level, but we will also be seeking to adopt a new social studies curriculum platform or tools for the 25, 26 school year. But we wanted to give our educators a year to be able to evaluate all of the resources that are out there and then make a recommendation to move forward. NEW for this year at the secondary level is a new advanced placement course titled African-American Studies. That course is currently fully subscribed, and thanks to our humanities team and our grants department, we secured a college board grant to be able to pay for all of the materials, including field trips for students in its first year, and that course currently has 29 students signed up to take that course. In terms of professional development, professional development will always be an ongoing discussion based on what students need and what staff are requesting in terms of support. At the preschool level, we will continue to utilize creative curriculum, but we will also be adding Handle With Care, which is for behavioral support, and then ALSS, PALS, which is a supplemental curriculum in terms of SEL for the creative curriculum resources. At the elementary, we will continue to provide professional learning community support on an as-needed basis. Each grade level is in a different place based on the student needs and then the configuration of each of the teams. And so professional learning communities are really dedicated time for the teachers to do their work, set the tone, spend time on the things that they need in order to support their students. And so we'll continue to provide that support. We'll continue to provide SEL and behavioral support, in addition to de-escalation and crisis prevention training. Equity Foundation training for new incoming staff, as well as instructional assistance and school administrative assistance is in the queue for this upcoming year, using some of our grant funds to pay for some of those. In addition to, we'll be looking at Cohort Three of our Educational Leadership Academy. And so each year, we bring in a dozen Collingswood and Oakland teachers interested in leadership opportunities that don't always demand that they leave the classroom. And so this year, one of Oakland's preschool teachers was in that cohort, and one of the things, one of her passion projects that she was working on that we are supporting is what does the pre-K to kindergarten transition look like and how can we ensure that it is a smooth one for all students, so that we are working between preschool and elementary teachers in order to fill in gaps in terms of lagging skills. And so other projects include training for instructional assistants, looking at opportunities to increase student voice on campus. And so each member in that cohort chose different projects. And so we're extremely excited. We will be launching a new cohort in the fall, and it is generally on an application basis, and so educators, they apply to participate. We meet monthly with a full day of professional development and collaboration. We do book studies, we do case studies as well. We have targeted sessions that we also use. And then we also use this as a think tank. And so the feedback that came from the group of this year, the cohort this year, was integral in the development of a teacher retention grant that Collingswood was awarded in the sum of $125,000, meant to focus on removing administrative tasks that prevent teachers from emphasizing teaching and learning. And so the feedback session that was used with this cohort was the direct content that led to the acceptance in the award. And so we look at these educational leaders as an opportunity. Some of the previous members are now program coordinators. They do the mentoring and induction program. They run summer programs. One of the members is now a principal. Another member is now a program supervisor. And so we use this as a way to invest in our staff. Title I funding will be used to support ELA and math for students in the classroom, and Title I will be used to provide additional training that is content-specific. And so at the middle and the high school level, similar supporting professional learning communities, multi-tiered system of support, so targeted academic interventions for students who struggle, sheltered English language support for non-ESL classrooms. And so it will be Year Two that we will be working with general education teachers who have English language learners in their classrooms with targeted professional development and skills to better engage students with limited English. De-escalation and crisis prevention training, Equity Foundation training, Equity Council support. And so in Collingswood and Oakland, we have staff that have participated in additional training and want to serve as leaders on each of their campuses, and then their input will be used, both at the school level and at the district level, to help influence professional development, policy, and practice. We will be participating in an Elevating Student Voice project this summer, using some of our expiring COVID funds to launch us on that, with the emphasis of Collingswood High School students working alongside advisors and community leaders on an action project really focused on how to improve school culture in their building. Students and staff will be working hand-in-hand in order to identify the problem, collect data, make recommendations for how to move forward, and then having those ideas moved forward on their campus. Title I funding at the secondary level will be used to support math instruction, as well as content-specific academic support. And so in terms of student support, our special services team will continue to provide services to all students who qualify per their IEP. And so maintenance of our high-quality programs, which includes self-contained, resource pull-out, replacement, supplemental, in-class support, occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech services, counseling, and behavioral support. And we will also continue to engage and work with organizations like the New Jersey Coalition of Inclusive Education to continue moving in the direction of how can we be more inclusive so that all students are able to participate in the least restrictive environment. Social-emotional learning support will continue to be provided. Our SEL program, or our Character Ed program, Character Strong, will continue to be used here. We'll continue to provide counseling services, in addition to making sure that we have certified behavioral analysis support. And so students who need additional resources and support in terms of behavior management, that will also be provided. In addition to counseling services, both at the middle and high school level, as well as our Wellness Center, which is now fully functional and providing services to students grades six through 12. Health and safety services, K-12, we have nursing support, certified athletic trainers, and consulting physicians of record for both all of our school-based health offices, as well as our athletic department. In addition to safe routes to school, and so we're currently working with one of the local transportation management associations for Camden County, looking at safe routes to schools for students K-12. We know that we have students that have distance within their commute, and so we're looking at what are more meaningful ways to ensure that all students have a safe route to school. And so that work started two months ago, and then throughout the summer, we'll continue to work with them until we are confident that all students are protected. And so in terms of technology support, referenced earlier, the department reorganization with an emphasis on improvement of customer service and technical assistance response time for schools. We'll continue to use our Google Workspace for Education, and so this classroom environment allows students to access all of their materials anywhere, anytime, on any device. We'll continue to operate using our one-to-one Chromebook initiatives on campus to ensure that all students are able to engage with the latest digital tools. And then we will continue to update our network infrastructure with an emphasis on cybersecurity and student and staff data protection. And so we are moving into Year Three of our learning schedule here in Oakland, and so minor tweaks or refinements, but the mechanics of the learning schedule here is really solid, and there's no need to make dramatic shifts. Home rooms will be maintained at current levels. Specials will be maintained. Small group instruction will be modified based on student need, and then Tier Two and Tier Three, the most intensive interventions, will be modified also based on student need. In addition to continuing to refine our Character Strong or SEL program, as well as clubs and extracurricular activities and programs, some funded through the district, others funded through our community partners. And so we just wanted to make sure that we were providing additional information, and so at our middle school, alongside, so patterning after the Oakland learning schedule, we believe that it was important that all educators K-12 had access to daily protected teacher time. And so we use a very similar model that we have benefited from here in Oakland, and we are now shifting that to the middle school and the high school. And so daily, all educators will have 30 minutes in the morning of protected common planning time to be able to do their work, to work with their colleagues, to look at data and plan, in addition to their prep time. And so some of the pathways that are offered at our middle school, in the performing arts arena, we have the band, orchestra, and chorus. In fine arts, we have multiple years of art, and then in STEM, we have technology, design, and I-Cubed, which is a project-based learning course of study. At the high school level, very similar, there's a whole host of advanced placement courses, as well as dual-credit, college-credit-bearing courses that will also be offered, in addition to the 30 minutes per day of protected teacher time, which ultimately will eliminate the need for early release for professional learning communities. And so based on feedback from our community, we felt that that was the best course of action. And so the pathways or four-year elective options at the high school, in performing arts is band, orchestra, and chorus. Fine arts is the art trajectory, under digital media, graphic design, television production, and audio production, engineering, and computer science. And so this is in addition to any one-off or any singleton electives that may be offered from year to year based on student choice. And so in addition, we will be maintaining all of our athletic programs. With one exception, we'll be adding an additional program in the spring, and that is girls' flag football. And so this year, girls' flag football was a club because it was going through the review process with the state athletic association. And so next year, it will have enough participation to actually shift into a sport. And so we'll be expanding with girls' flag football, and so fall, winter, and spring. In addition to a whole host of extracurricular activities and clubs, those will also be offered based on student choice, student interest, and signup. And so we also wanted to kind of give a preview, and so we just wanted to thank all of our community members, including our two board members here, who have continued to advocate on behalf of the district and districts like ours. I know that Oakland is one of the districts that is participating in a growing Camden County group that is seeking to be a bit more aggressive and direct in our state-level advocacy for fair-funding formulas. And so we will be releasing additional information and advocacy support literature to our community next week that speaks to this as well. And so we have been asking for our community since March to partner with us, and we will have a new request with more specificity beginning next week in terms of how do we push the state to do a better job of ensuring that students in Collingswood and Oakland have an equitable educational system. And that concludes the presentation.
Before we move on, do any board members have any questions about anything for Dr. McDowell on the presentation? I have a couple. That's okay. First, thank you for that, because it's really helpful to get a better sense of, you know, what's happening here, obviously, but then when we send our kids to the middle and high school. A couple of questions regarding curriculum. I think it's been years, but I'm just curious about, when you were talking about languages, Latin has not been offered for some time, correct, on the secondary campus?
A year. It's been a year.
It's been a year, and there's no plans to bring it back?
No, there's not.
That's unfortunate. That's, I mean, personally, the best language class that I took and still use it every single day. I had a question about some of the electives in regards to the pathways. I didn't see things like creative writing, journalism. Are those the individual electives that you mentioned based on student choice?
Yeah, so those are one-offs. And so traditionally, the way that those have been offered is that English teachers didn't teach a section of English and they taught an elective. And so right now, we know that the school is, they're working to build their master schedule, and so if they are able to add those types of courses into their schedule, they will. And so, but it really is, it's too soon to tell. And so initially, during the course selection process, students requested courses. And so initially, during the course selection process, students requested courses, and so I know that the counseling department, they facilitated that process, and then they are making decisions based on the number of course requests for each of those classes. And so I know specifically, creative writing, there were three English electives that were undersubscribed, and so I know that there was a discussion among the administrative team at the high school about what should be offered and what should be consolidated, but they're, they're, they're still working through those details.
I'm curious about the Elevating Student Voice Project, which sounds really great. How are the students chosen for that? Do they volunteer themselves? You know, I'm, I'm just curious to see, because it's an opportunity for Oakland representation, obviously, so.
So initially, it was rolled out by the, by Principal Newman in their grade-level meetings, and it started with two things. One, students requesting to be considered, and then teachers recommending students. And so I believe they've identified a dozen students, diverse in nature in terms of what was, what was requested was that the students, the cohort of students represented the full body of the, of the campus across all areas. And, and so they were just approved last night by the Collingwood Board of Education. I'll have to go back and check if there are, if Oakland students are signed up to participate.
Be curious to know, yeah. And then the last thing I'll say, sorry to be dominating all these questions, but there was a lot in that presentation. When it comes to the middle school transition, because it's really helpful for our board to know what, you know, where our kids are going and things like that, I'm gonna just publicly say and advocate for inclusion of Oakland students in all kinds of activities. There was a day when Collingswood students were invited to the middle school to see the electives and get excited about things, and while there were educators from the middle school who came to Oakland later, the Oakland students weren't included in that initial part, so I would advocate for their inclusion in the future. That's all. Thanks.
I have a quick question about, off of something Teresa said, with the creative writing and the journalism and things, is there a chance that those classes are coming back then? Because they were cut.
No, no classes were cut, and, and so I, I think that, the, so my understanding of the, the master schedule development is that there are classes that were requested, and then there were classes that they didn't know whether or not they were going to be able to offer based on what has been requested versus what's required.
Because that's what they told the kids, just so you know. That's what they told the kids, and they had the kids redo their schedules with other electives. So kids who did sign up for that, for some of those classes, were then told they couldn't take them and had to pick new classes.
Holly, who's that?
Students. Middle school, high school, people in high school. I don't know who, but I know, I don't, I can't say who, but I know for a fact that that occurred, because I know kids that had to redo their schedules because they had picked creative writing, and then they were told that it was not going to be offered. So if they're reevaluating based on interest, those kids are no longer showing up as interest because now their schedule requests show different classes.
And so I'm not, I'm not able to speak to that.
Yeah, no, I just wanted you to-
I can, I can follow up with the, with the-
Just to know, and, and maybe those kids are fine with what their new pick stuff, their new stuff is, but if that's how they're evaluating whether to offer it, that's, I would have concerns, just because somebody's not doing something.
So I know that what ends up happening is, is that, so the master schedule process, it's a pretty cumbersome one, and so our lead counselor will be working throughout the summer, and so as she moves through that particular process, she'll be able to let us know where there's areas of flexibility, and if there's areas of flexibility, it'd be my expectation that they have a plan to go back and talk to students that may have been affected by previous decisions.
I would just suggest maybe reminding them of that, because I'm not sure that they will think of it. I understand that making a schedule is an extremely difficult process and everything, and I do understand that if they didn't have enough interest in something, saying, okay, we had 10 kids should sign up, it's not enough for a class, we're not going to have this. But if they're considering revisiting that, but those kids have already changed, I just think that, like, some, somebody just needs to make sure, like, because I don't know if they even have records of who picked it from before. I don't know. I just know that, I do know for a fact that there were kids who were spoken to about changing because those classes were not offered. And I had heard that people were disappointed in things like creative writing and journalism not being there and stuff, and I agree with that. Oh, that's important classes.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, sure.
Like, this is probably more of a parent question than anything, but, so like, in the middle school, they get to pick some options, but there's never a guarantee that they get what they pick?
Correct.
And my daughter, I think, picked six and got something that was not one of the six.
They don't know what they're getting until August, but they did revisit, like, I know what was picked for some kids as requests, and I know that they were then, had to go back and, and pick new classes, and so their requests show different classes now than they did. Nobody knows what they're getting until August, and that makes sense to me. It's always been that way.
That's the reason I wanted to clarify, that they're just selecting what their interests are, but they don't know.
Right, but if you're basing it on interest-
Right.
And then they're told, okay, we're not having this class, so we have to pick something else. Now that pool of kids that was interested is not going to show his interest, which makes it look like the class isn't even wanted.
Sorry, Colleen, is that, was that because of staffing reductions?
Not that I, I don't know the reasons. I just know that that happened. And I heard it from a couple of kids, and that's the only reason I know.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions about the presentation?
I just have one question. It's about the high school. The, the, it looked like there was not an engineering elective for seniors. Is there, is there something that falls under that? It stopped the aerospace on the junior year?
And so our engineering program, it's now, it will be, this year, we'll be moving into year three, and so there are no seniors that have gone through the trajectory yet. And so next year, it'll be four, four years.
Good question. I didn't know so. Just a quick question for Dr. McDowell. Have there been any reductions in advanced placement courses, do you know of recently? Like, I know Latin went away, and that's, may have been one, if there was a Latin AP, but are there other Latin AP classes that have gone away?
Not that I'm currently aware of. So advanced placement are often educator-dependent. And so to my knowledge, there have not been reductions in, in advanced placement courses. There may be reductions in dual-credit courses if individuals are no longer with us.
Gotcha.
So to piggyback-
To piggyback on that question, and maybe I'm dating myself, when something was called AP back then, that meant you took a test and you got credits. We're using it as AP as like a step above honors if it's called AP, but dual-credit if it's the one where you take the test?
No, and so advanced, advanced placement courses are through College Board, and so there are approved syllabi, curriculum, and curriculum tools. The dual-credit classes are credit-bearing with our partnerships with colleges and universities for students who qualify. And so we have educators that have master's degrees in the content area, and we have articulation agreements with multiple colleges that there are specific courses that if students take and pass that course, if they pay for the requisite credit for that university, they actually get college credit while they're in high school. Whereas with the AP class, they-
Just bypass that when they get it.
They take the AP exam, and dependent on what they score on the AP exam, most colleges accept it as a credit-bearing option.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Unless there's any other questions, we can move on to section four, which is Committee of the Whole. Is there a motion to go on to Committee of the Whole?
So moved. Second.
Tie and tie. All right, we are now in Committee of the Whole. There is one item on the agenda, but I know Rich had another item that he wanted to mention, and then we can open it up and see if there are others. So the first item on the agenda is we, the school received an email from a former student wondering if the school had plans for a memorial for Ryan Rogers, who was a former student of Oakland, who passed away sadly last year. I did not know him, but I know family members knew him. In fact, they were, there was a benefit this weekend that they were at. So I sent you all the email yesterday. I don't know, hopefully you had a chance to look at it, but if anyone has any thoughts or if you want to talk about it. Now, we haven't had a chance to talk about it in committee yet, so this is our first time talking about it, but just wanted to see if anyone had any thoughts to share. All right, hearing none.
I was gonna say, it's, I think it'd be best to discuss it in committee. It was, I was glad we got the email, and I think we can kind of brainstorm in the meantime and find a way to, you know, that would be fitting to, to honor Ryan. So, yeah, I think for our next committee meetings, let's come with some ideas.
I think that's probably a good idea.
I'd also love any precedents from, you know, I mean, I have very limited memory. I mean, hopeful that we don't have too many of these things that we, you know, need to memorialize because it is very sad, but yeah, if there, maybe Ms. Bolden could offer some guidance in that way.
Great, so let's table this, and we'll discuss that at our August committee meetings. All right, thank you. Rich, I'm gonna put you on the spot because I know you had reached out about committee reports, so you wanna share your thoughts on that?
I just wanted, I just wanted to do a hard push for the committee notes, something that I've kind of gotten used to, sitting on the Collingswood Board, amongst other things. But I, I do enjoy, it's, it's really just a nice, quick snapshot of what happens at the other committees. I know sometimes they get sent out, sometimes they don't, people are busy, so if I could do a, a push for that to try to get those out from all the committees a little more regularly, I, I find it helpful. And to committee chairs, like, one of the things I did when I was chairing Finance was I kind of put together a template in Word where I could just plug in some updates as we were going through the committee meeting. So, you know, if that's something we want to explore together, I'm more happy to help folks, and we can put together kind of a template, that way you're not having to kind of recreate the wheel when you get home. I, I, you know, during, during committee time, I would, I took the notes. I'm a decent typewriter, so I would just do it while I was there, and so I didn't have to do it at home. But the template makes that possible, so just wanted to do a, a push for that.
I'd love to see that template. Can you share that with us? That'd be great. I'd love to use that tool.
Yeah, we would need to tweak it for each committee, right? Because the one I did for Finance had, you know, just the regular business, all Bethan stuff, and then things that we would include, but we could definitely tweak that for, you know, each committee, anytime.
I'd just chime in that it would be helpful, too, when sending those reports to, if there are items not part of that particular committee's agenda, but they're discussed in that meeting, to include that as well. I have the honor of sitting in all three committees, but sometimes my memory is clouded in terms of where that discussion happened, so it'd be helpful to have like a recap in, oh yes, curriculum did discuss this, and it was on the Finance Committee, but they discussed it as well, so that sort of thing.
Thank you for reminding me.
All right, is there anything else for Committee of the Whole?
I hate to say this, but I have one, one item. Speaking of safe routes to school, and a lot of you know what's coming now, because I've been bitching about this for 10 months, and nothing has happened, unless it happened after four o'clock this afternoon. But on the White Horse Pike at Newton Avenue, there's a crosswalk, and there are signs on each side of the street reflecting the fact that there's a crosswalk there, and the Oakland kids are supposed to use that crosswalk. Last September, I told everybody I could think of, and the, it's gotta be a Collingswood Public Works problem, but I asked that the tree limb that's blocking completely, the one sign that you can see as you come down the street, that I asked that that be trimmed back so that you could actually see the sign. Here we are, one full school, school year later, 10 months, and nothing has happened. Last year, I, I advised the Collingswood Police Chief, who at that point was also the Superintendent of Public Works, and he was gonna have that taken care of, and I'm sure, if I live long enough, that I'll see that tree trimmed. But if anybody knows anybody that could see that that happens, maybe we're gonna have a traffic accident there, and they'll run into the tree and knock it over, so it'll be a little bit easier. But that's my, my complaint for the safe routes to school.
Thank you for the reminder. I noticed that as well. Also wish that, just in general, it was a safer crosswalk, but I digress on that, too. Anyone else for Committee of the Whole? All right, is there a motion to come out of Committee of the Whole?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All right, moving along to section five, future dates and miscellaneous information. Not much there, because it's summertime. So the summer stream and ESY programs start on July 8th and end on August 1st, and our next board meeting is on August 20th. Section six, this is our first public comment section. If you have something to bring to the board that is listed on the agenda, you can come up now, please stand, state your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less. Any public comments at this time? All right, hearing none.
There's a sign back there.
Moving on to section seven, sorry, my computer freezing, routine board business. The first one is motion to approve the minutes from our May 21st board meeting. Section 7.02 is, as required, the school district contracts report from Bethan, and so these are attached here. And so is there a motion to approve items 7.01 and 7.02?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there any questions from board members on either of those items?
This might be a dumb question, but I thought Garrison Architects was something taken out of the budget? Is this just that they're an approved vendor? For, like, as needed? Okay.
All right, thanks. On a roll call. Perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. Section eight, this is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. McDowell.
Okay. Section 8.01 is the enrollment report. May of 2023 is 276, May of 2024 is 269. 8.02 and .03 are the safety drill and suspension reports. They are also attached. In addition, just a few celebratory things that were not covered in the, the presentation. And so we have students that participated as senior leaders this year, and so we just wanted to celebrate and acknowledge the Senior Leadership Academies of 2024. So the cohort this year was dedicated to making positive changes in the, in the school community. And so these student leaders, which comprise of Collingswood, Oakland, and Woodland seniors, they accumulated over 500 service hours, which also included 65 elementary classroom lessons, 14 trips, successful peer mediations, and they raised over $5,000 to support their passion projects. And so we just wanted to acknowledge their efforts. We're appreciative for their leadership, and their impact to the school community will never be forgotten, and we'd just like to publicly acknowledge Mr. Larmour and Mr. Adams for serving as their advisors. We will be publishing all of their names in a community update later this week. We'd also just like to thank our community for allowing us to serve students this year. And so as we reach the, the end of the 23-24 school year, I just had the great honor of, of attending all of the closing ceremonies, and each ceremony was unique. The, my highlight of every year is the Oscars here in Oakland, and trying to, to, to see in the faces of the students if they can guess what the teachers see in them before they actually announce their name, and so that's, that's always enjoyable. And so during graduation- And so during graduation on the 17th, we were honored to celebrate 185 graduates in the high school class of 2024. And so just a few accolades for this group of young people. They were awarded over $5,128,136 in scholarships, including having one of the first and only Melinda and Bill Gates Foundation Scholarship recipients. And so we wanted to recognize outstanding performance of the Class of 2024 valedictorian, Micah Anger, who will be attending Dartmouth in the fall, and salutatorian Wesley Wilcox, who will be attending the University of Vermont. In addition to honoring and recognizing the 35 National Honor Society graduates and their classmates, who got into some of the most prestigious colleges in the country, including universities like Boston University, Brown, Carnegie Mellon, Clemson, Dartmouth, Drexel, Georgetown, Georgia Tech, Indiana, James Madison, LSU, Ohio State, Penn State, Pepperdine, Syracuse, Temple, MIT, UMass, USC, and Wesleyan, just to name a few. And so extremely proud of what they were able to accomplish. And so in addition to them showing their resilience and perseverance, we believe that they're well-prepared and will continue with that success. And so in addition to their academics, they also represented the arts in very exceptional ways. And so the Panther Marching Band was a top 10 finalist in the Atlantic Coast Championships, and the Indoor Percussion Ensemble placed third in the same championships. PAWS TV senior Amelia Trae received a 2024 Emmy for Outstanding Talent in News Anchor. Senior Enzo Damasi received a 2022 Emmy for producing a holiday show. And then PAWS TV seniors received Emmy nominations for producing Good Morning Collingswood News, as well as Panther Ignite and Panther Football Culture, in addition to a documentary about Odyssey of the Mind. And so in addition, we had one of our students who won first place in the Camden County Teen Arts Festival, as well as having our students' films be honored in the New Jersey 10-Day Film Festival. Our student athletes were also recognized for their outstanding achievement. The boys' baseball team were conference champions. Girls lacrosse were conference champions. Girls soccer won the Jim Black Sportmanship Award. Boys basketball team leader Tomas Money scored 1,049 points over his four-year career, broke the school record for most points in a game. Track and cross-country team leader Elijah Forrest won the Group II State Championship for the two-mile event. Football team leader Shakur Carter broke multiple records with a season-high of nine interceptions, 57 receptions, with a career record of 115 receptions, 1,800 yards, and 21 touchdown receptions. In addition to our student athletes being recognized as All-Stars in the Colonial Conference, the South Jersey Conference, the South Jersey Interstate Swim League, the South Jersey Interstate Lacrosse League, and the Burlington County Sports Leagues. And so we just wanted to, just to acknowledge the tremendous efforts of our students. And so over the summer, all schools will reflect on their successes and identify areas in need of improvement, and then we'll continue with the longstanding tradition of site-based leadership. And so we just look forward to learning and leading together and focusing on our efforts on rigorous learning environments with a continued emphasis on community and culture. And that concludes my report.
Thank you for that. I just want to add, too, kudos to the middle school choir led by Mr. Hartong, who brought home giant trophies from competition at Six Flags. I was privileged to shop around that trip, and yeah, they're outstanding, so thanks to them. All right, Section 9, this is the Business Administrator Report.
All right, so this evening I have your monthly May transfers. Item 9.01, 9.02 is your financial statements, your Board Secretaries' report, cash reports. 9.03 is the listing of the purchase orders for the month of June. And 9.04, a listing of the bills to be paid tomorrow morning pending approval tonight. And I know it's summer, but this is when I get really busy, so we're scheduled, your books will be audited end of July, beginning of August, so hopefully when we meet on August 20th, I'll have like a financial update for Finance Committee. And that's it.
Thank you. Section 10, Finance Committee Report. Jimmy.
This is a very large doozy, all 19 points. I'm a little behind on this month. Is there any, could I get an assistance on that, Bethan?
I will do for you.
I apologize, thank you.
That's okay.
I owe you.
No worries. All right, let me page Dan. I always print my agenda early, so I don't want to, okay. So Item 10.01 through 10.06 are those items that I just mentioned, your monthly approvals. 10.07 is the revised resolution for your school budget. As required by the Department of Ed, they restored $274,869 to Oakland, but with it came some strings, always. So I had to, we had to resubmit the budget, but they needed a detailed board resolution as to which line items in your budget I was placing the funds for tracking purposes. So that is that item. 10.08 is our annual approval that allows me, should funds be available, that we can deposit into your approved reserve accounts funds. So Oakland currently has on the books, you have Maintenance Reserve, Capital Reserve, and Tuition Reserve. I usually, this is the only time of year that you can do it, you can only do it in the month of June. So what I do is I do up to a dollar amount, and then when the auditor's here, you know, we kind of make the decision. 10.09 is your listing of your out-of-district special ed placements as of this month. It's always a moving target. 10.10 is approving just the addendum to extend your agreement with, excuse me, ESS for your aides. And I did reach out to them about substitute teachers, we're supposed to be having a meeting with them this summer. 10.11 is approving educational consultancy to provide LDT services on an as-needed basis over the summer, because child's waiting is their 10-month. So even though approved to work over the summer, we, you know, in case something comes up, we can get the IEPs written. 10.12 is approving the list of services and fees from Gloucester County Special Services for any of our children that go there. 10.13 is the Shared Administrative Services Agreement with the Collingswood Board of Ed. 10.14 is the InterLocals Shared Service Agreement with Oakland Borough, because they take care of your grounds out front. 10.15 is accepting the ESEA grant allocations for '24-'25. 10.16, oh, my computer froze, come on, is approving, this is a year three of a five-year lease for your posters machine. 10.17 is approving real-time information technology. That is the software we use to write student IEPs. And 10.18 is approving OC Panthers basketball from August through November 1st. And then Item 19 is very important, but it's basically my summer resolution. So this just allows me from now until we meet again in August to pay bills and do what I need to do, and then bring everything to you in August to ratify, but just, you know, to close the books and pay the bills and keep everything moving because we don't meet in July. And that is it. So Items 10.01 through 10.19.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve those items?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions from board members about any of those?
Just one comment, I did share this in committee. Since I'm an employee of the Collingswood School District, and some of those administrators are my bosses, just to not show any conflict of interest, I'll be abstaining from Item 10.13.
Thank you. All right, on a roll call.
Mrs. Ezekiel.
Yes.
Mrs. Vappel.
Yes.
Mr. Stotts.
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo.
Yes.
Mr. Tabey.
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer, with the exception of 10.13?
Yes.
Mrs. Bushko?
Yes.
All right, moving on to Section 11, the Curriculum and Personnel Committee Report. This is Todd.
All righty, good evening, everyone. So Item 11.01, we're looking to approve a paid maternity leave, which will begin October of 2024 through November, followed by an unpaid leave of no more than 12 weeks from November through February. The anticipated return for that employee is March of 2024. Item 11.02, we're looking for approval for additional hours for staff for after-school clubs at the rate of $50.49 to be paid from ESIR funds. Item 11.03, we are seeking to approve the following staff for AED training at a rate of $39.70 per hour, only for certain workers, as you'll see there, for some it is a regular workday, so they will not receive extra pay. Item 11.04, we are seeking tuition reimbursement for Cape Morocco at $2,552.72. Item 11.05, we are seeking approval for the following substitutes and tutors for the '24-'25 school year. Item 11.06, we are looking for, well, not exactly travel expense, but it was related to professional development, it was a virtual professional development that they had, it was paid out of a Title II grant, and it covered all the resources that those staff members will be receiving from attending that professional development. And Item 11.07, just seeking approval to allow Dr. McDowell to make hires in the summer months. So we are seeking approval on Items 11.01 through 11.07.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions from board members?
Just one, it might be dumb, in 11.03, what does AED stand for?
Oh, the.
That's what I thought. Okay. I just was curious. Thank you. Thank you.
On a roll call, please.
Mrs. Ezekiel.
Yes.
Mrs. Vappel.
Yes.
I got you. Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Bushko?
Yes.
Section 12, this is the Community Relations and Policy Committee. Therese.
Hi. Item 12.01 is the Collingswood Report from Mr. Tabey.
Good evening. I just sent everything out this morning, so if you haven't gotten to your inbox yet, you'll see the full agenda from Collingswood's meeting, along with these updates. One thing I didn't include in my updates that I wanted to make a note of that Dr. McDowell mentioned was the partnerships. So you'll see all the approvals for the actual universities that were partnered with in there, which is, it's just interesting to see how many there are. We had our executive session for the CSA evaluation to review those documents. Much like we had tonight, we recognized our graduating senior leaders and some of their accomplishments over the course of the year. Building Grounds and Finance Committee, much like we did tonight, reapproved budget with the reflected recovery of some state funding with the same hoops we had. Approval for the Advanced Placement in African-American Studies grant that is funding this great course that is already full. Approval for the Perkins Secondary Consolidation Grant, which is a standard grant, and approval for the Teacher Climate, Culture, and Innovation Grant that we talked about earlier. Committee, we had our high school cheerleaders will be attending Cheer Camp over the course of the summer, and also book your days on the calendar for December 12, 13, and 14. The CMS Fall Musical will be Freaky Friday, the one-act edition, so get ready for that. Personnel updates, we welcomed a new middle school Spanish teacher, William Snyder. We'll also be rolling out Universal Mental Health Screener, and I linked some additional information on that from the Department of Ed. Select staff and students will also be participating in the Elevating Student Voice Training that we discussed earlier, and Collingswood will be partnering, will be partnering together for the summer curriculum mapping and auditing, so that was approved as well. That's it for Collingswood.
Thank you, Rich. Item 12.02 is the PTA Liaison Report, and Mrs. Rotondo wasn't able to attend the last meeting, so I'll report on the Oakland PTA met for their final meeting of the school year on Wednesday, June 5th. In addition to the normal business, they talked about some amazing, the months of May and June were full of events, from Muffins with Mom, the Townwide Yard Sale on June 1st, all of the 5th grade promotion activities, which, as a parent of a 5th grader, was incredible, and kudos again to the Planning Committee that did an amazing job. Donuts with Dad, which was on June 7th, and then a different iteration of the Spring Flame, which was quite success and really played on being a give-back to the community, a way to engage families, and seems to be a nice model to go forward. There was recognition of the Teacher of the Year and the Instructional Assistant of the Year, and then the institution of new board members as well. So Matt Spade and Lisa Angelata, sorry that it's not written on here, I hope I'm saying everybody's names correctly, and public apologies if I'm not, joining the PTA Board. So very excited about moving forward. Their next meeting won't be until the school year starts in September. Item 12.03 is the OMESEC Report from Mrs. Bushko.
I'm afraid I do not have a report at this time. I did not hear back from Mr. Scher. Next month, August.
All good. Well, I'm happy to report Item 12.04, the Oakland Education Foundation did meet on June 11th, I believe, and covered a lot of ground. In addition to scholarships, the usual OEF scholarships that are being awarded, there's also a teacher grant for the preschool that OEF is going to be supporting. Then there was a lot of talk about fundraisers and things that we can do, especially in light of the, you know, recent state funding shortfalls. So there's talk about maybe a late fall, early winter event around Eagles football that could be a great fundraiser, reinvigorating a letter campaign to local businesses to help support the Oakland Education Foundation, which, as a reminder, is a 501(c)(3) organization that can support anything needed at the school. And there was also talk about the leadership meeting with Ms. Bolden to talk about a wish list for next year, especially since so many pieces of the budget had to be cut. So they're really looking forward to, and just publicly, anyone who is interested in getting involved in OEF, it is not a huge commitment but has great impact, so I do encourage anyone, please feel free to reach out to me directly, and I can connect you with the leadership. And that's it. And then Item 12.05, we have policies of first second rating that we reviewed at the last meeting in May. Equitable Educational Opportunity Revised, Secret Societies Revised, Equal Access of Student Organizations Revised, Vandalism, and Notification of Juvenile Offender Case Disposition. So we are seeking approval tonight for Items 12.01 through 12.05.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Are there any questions from board members?
Can I make a request? Not a question, but for Rich. I attended part of the Collingswood Board Meeting last night in the cafeteria, and the acoustics in the cafeteria are horrible. The, you know, I'm the wrong person to complain about sound, but you couldn't hear the board at all. I mean, you could see lips moving, but you couldn't hear anything. The speakers on there, they had the mic in their hand, I guess, maybe that was it. But if Collingswood continues to have voluminous meetings, if they could plan on having them maybe somewhere else that would be more accessible, maybe the caf, not the cafeteria, maybe the auditorium? Just a thought.
Thank you. All right, on a roll call, please.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Vappel?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Bushko?
Yes.
All right, Section 13, 13.01 is All right, Section 13, 13.01 is last month's H I B report. And this is the only item in this section. So is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions from Board members? All right, on a roll call, please.
Mrs. Ezekiel.
Yes.
Mrs. Vappel.
Yes.
Mr. Stotts.
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo.
Yes.
Mr. McMillan.
Yes.
Mr. Tabey.
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mrs. Bushko.
Yes.
Section 14, this is our second public comment section. Please stand, state your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less. This is for any item you wish to bring before the Board. And hearing none, I'm just going to mention something that I forgot to mention during Committee of the Whole. But yesterday, Dr. McDowell had mentioned this during his presentation. But yesterday, the president from the Haddon Township Board of Education convened a meeting with leaders from around the area. So I'd say it was primarily Haddon Township and Collingswood. But Beth Ann and Therese did join as well. I was on there. So we are looking at ways, looking at legislation for pushing for improvements to the state funding formula. So there will be a lot more to come on that. And working on getting the word out, pushing through like an email letter campaign or social media. So stay tuned for that. But if anyone is interested in learning more and/or joining future meetings, last night was the first one, let me know, and I'll be happy to forward the information to you.
And if I can just piggyback on that, Dr. McDowell, I know you said that there's communication forthcoming to community members. And just as the Chair of the School Policy and Community Relations Committee, I'd love if we could coordinate our efforts because, yes, I am participating in this other group. You know, it would just be great to, just know, right-hand knowing what the left hand's doing in best practices. But this is, I'm very grateful that Denise put this out to our Board members. And I'd encourage anyone else to get involved. There's already a doodle poll for the next meeting, which will be in July. And they are meeting with our, now in for the, Lampit, is that right? Yes, Assemblywoman, just to talk about, you know, recommendations as well for what to do. So, yeah, I mean, any way also that our committee can maybe talk next month or in August about ways to help support what Dr. McDowell is going to be communicating and then this advocacy group. I'm all for it.
Here, here, yes. All right, Section 15, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right. We are adjourned. Good night, everyone. Enjoy your summer.